I mean, I think that's pretty much a given. I think it's pretty given that it's the best in Ohio.
You said it's arguably the best in the nation. Really?
They and Chicago have like an ongoing Twitter feud about which one of them is the best art museum.
No kidding? But better than like, what do you have in like New York or LA or I'm trying to think of. Was it one that was at the Goodyear or something?
What do you think? It's centered here.
Art museum, the art museums?
The Cleveland Art Museum.
Is better than Big Mama?
They claim to be. I think it's a matter of opinion.
Well, you know, the, the, the East Coasts can't admit that there, there might be something really good out here in the Midwest. The reality is that it is.
It is nice. I don't, I don't know if I would compare it to the Metropolitan Museum of Modern Art or anything like that.
Right.
But it's pretty nice.
It's marketing.
I mean, that's really.
I've been to all three. I've been to Chicago, I've been to Cleveland.
You know, you could never, you could never achieve a museum like that today in Cleveland that was built by the industrialists after World War Two.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like Youngstown. Youngstown's got a beautiful little art gallery over there.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, wait, is that Youngstown or is there's.
It's Youngstown, right down, right in downtown Youngstown.
Okay.
Has it has a terrific little gallery. It's got some pretty remarkable pieces.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, just trying to think, it had, outside of the Boy Scouts, it had one of the, one of the larger collections of Norman Rockwell art.
I remember reading about that before, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, really fantastic.
What about the Akron, I mean, I drive by that periodically. I mean, the outside looks amazing, but I haven't been inside that.
I've never been inside that.
Yeah. Do you think there'd be some sort of reciprocity and, you know, you and Katie could go there, but.
Oh, we could get in free.
Okay.
We just never have.
They have.
It was Carnegie, by the way, who built the Cleveland Museum.
Oh, really?
The Akron one. Cause two beer festivals in the summer.
Who built the, the big, the other second, is it New York, the Frick Museum in New York? Was by the Fricks of Pittsburgh Steel fame. I think it was Carnegie's partner.
Yeah, I was gonna say, cause Carnegie was used to.
Fantastic collection, apparently. Never been there.
Interesting.
I don't know, I'll probably super glue myself to one of the paintings. Protest something.
Yes, fossil fuels, right?
They super glued themselves to the wall next to the painting? I will say that I did not find the Mona Lisa very.
I bet. I could do better than that.
Well, it's more than that. You walk into the room.
It's rubbish.
This huge display in the middle of the room and the painting is like, I don't know, maybe the size of one of this, these computer monitors.
Really? That's probably something would have been bigger than that.
That's what I, that's why I was.
So it's like, it's like.
But what really got me is that the hallway to walk into the Mona Lisa has the Napoleon, the collection of Napoleon series, which are like huge paintings the size of the floor of this room, incredibly detailed. And then you walk into the room with the Mona Lisa and it's kind of like small and unimpressive compared to that.
Is this a copy? Suggestion on these temporary signs. I'm sure putting any kind of orders.
Mayor, how are you?
All right, good afternoon.
Nice to see you.
Give you the particular.
See you.
Yeah.
Matthew?
How's it going?
Okay, you didn't get the memo?
It's been a while.
No, no. Jacket. This is, it's starting to be a jacket thing now. It's winter time.
I can't, I can't do it.
Are you listening to the senior emeritus?
Yeah. The old statesman.
But he hasn't been.
Yeah, as I say, you've got your sport coat on.
I do, but you know something?
Don't get the word out.
There was a time when I would have been executed for wearing a pair of jeans to a council.
That's true.
Really? Oh, yeah. I mean, we used to all wear coats and ties for council, regular. Skating gear. Let's, let's bring it back.
I run warm.
Do you run warm?
I do, I do. It was, for example.
You know what he's gonna do next time?
And it is noted.
It was sixty-three degrees in my office this morning.
You're the reason I keep up.
I didn't sit for an hour and a half until after I sat in there in this shirt.
You know what he's gonna do?
You're gonna, you're gonna have a smoking shirt on. That would get.
That's not bad.
We're looking at Sat Hefner and a satin.
I don't do that, that idea.
Sat jacket.
Like the, smelled like a Komodo or something. Maybe we could have Komodo.
The mayor loves.
I'm still here.
Always want to check, you know?
Yeah. At that point, like it's a psychological thing that blue makes people. Yeah, I don't want to try to read that. Have you ever heard that? I think it's a psychological thing, like a blue is like a non-threatening color or something like that.
What color?
Blue, for like, that's, that's why like these politicians wear like a blue suit.
I mean, I've heard that like painting a room blue is a political thing, not that like.
We're wearing blue.
More pink.
We have GPS in this room.
It's like a pink.
I'll bet you ninety-nine percent of all the Sarco's.
Some football stadiums, pink locker.
Oh, I've heard that, yeah.
They don't need a sign on our place.
Really? I would not have guessed that.
Yep. I've heard that some prisons would do that. There was Jill White-Payo, you would get pink underwear.
Yeah.
Is it true that the visitor locker room is that getting you down at Memorial Stadium?
There's, I'm telling you, there's like a longstanding history. Not even hasn't done theirs since I think they built the stadium in nineteen thirty or something. And half of it was painted pink.
It's just petty.
Is this replacing this?
Yes.
Okay, so this.
Because John got sick, so.
Okay.
Hello, how are you?
So I need to warm up, right?
The white, I'm. Jamie? It's cool. It's good to see you. Do you should.
As far as I'm aware, they're still coming.
For Jamie.
Although they did not send.
Hi, David.
What I do?
The food bank.
Okay. Did I actually just talk about, do you want to introduce her?
Um.
Or you can, I mean, really?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I can do it.
They did not send me any audio visuals yet.
I bumped this into like you.
They're a good program. I don't know what they have to do.
Oh, there you go. I wonder if it's like a statement.
Might be because of new. Relocating. I don't know, so is it still connected?
It's just not shaking.
I do think that falls under the same category, don't shake the baby, don't shake the owl. It's food bank, one word or two words? I know I made it two words, but now I'm doubting myself. Yes, Walsh has a.
Really?
Uh, once, once a year, volunteer day that I used to do with my residents.
Oh, that's cool. I mean, I've been to the one up at Akron, which I've been down to the one down on Kansas.
Terrific impression.
Oh, I've never been to Kansas, I've only been to the Akron. I didn't even know they actually.
It's where, it's where Fishers used to be. Dave, how are you?
Sitting in a hole.
Sitting in a hole? That's right, we didn't get, uh, didn't get phone books for you this season.
I know. A couple of cushions.
Yeah.
We brought all those K-cuts, duct tape a bunch when we get it.
Very good.
So Dave.
Yes, sir.
Requiring websites would require changing.
I don't know. Adding websites, not required, just adding websites for those that have them available, have already submitted them.
That's right, we don't, we didn't even ask.
Yeah, but nothing, or we had them on the other form.
I wondered who was gonna attach. To say this, something like his family, something like some internal thing.
If I had websites, I would have put them in there. I mean, for some of them, you can get the website or email address, but. Right now, we don't.
Are you thinking maybe like the Chamber of Commerce?
Well, it's only registration, but contractors.
Mm-hmm.
It'll cost. You'll see such many risks that should be cooked up.
That it's gonna be ideally, residents to see. Fantastic.
I think it's great.
It was always me, me, me.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, we don't, we don't ask for websites right now.
My contacts. I should have worn my contacts. He's quite.
I didn't wear those for two years.
Oh, especially on the website. Yes, I suppose it was.
Now I still love.
It's all good.
I didn't base one of my.
Yeah.
Just prescriptions of those songs.
These are, I haven't changed this. These are like. Eight-year-old preoccupation pieces first on the turn.
Oh, yeah.
Better Again, Tommy, always.
Now, is it, is the new one blue again or?
It looks exactly the same.
I wish they were, if I could wear them.
I, that's fair.
Further hours. If they're like. That'd be perfect. Uh, half.
You know what you have to do? Well, see, it won't help me because of the back door.
He's a durian, as the other day.
That's where it was different.
Kind of in between.
Hello. We never connected.
Prescription for my. Yeah, it misses what it really makes my attention cloud, so like it's really in between now.
Okay. If you have it on a flag, it doesn't make sense. Uh, can you email it to me?
What's the network?
Uh, there should be a guest on there to get on.
Guest, okay. I would give it, I would give it a try. Yeah. Just do that way. So then, Dave, I'm speaking. Where will I be?
Over there, over there. Yeah, and see, we're seated pretty close by.
Exactly, so that works out, okay.
This is Tasha from the food bank. This is Matt, he's our president.
Matt, nice to meet you. Thank you, thank you, thanks for having me. It's good, it's good. You know, it would be great, so I'm, I'm the odd one. I like a hundred different colors.
Oh, I didn't watch it.
Around Christmas, that's it.
I do, I do, I just, I love the weather for weather.
Thanks. That's the real kid, it's just stressful.
Have the gear, I like to get all.
Perfect.
Thank you. Good thing you did that, I should get a one.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Actually, I actually.
Tasha's on.
Yes, that is fantastic. Thank you. I was trying to figure out what the number six was, but I realized it's on your agenda, so that's wonderful, thank you.
Jamie's best friend ever.
There you go.
Okay, okay.
Nice to meet you.
Good to see you. Uh, yes, I am from Long Island.
Oh, are you?
Good morning, Mr. Knight.
Absolutely.
Is that your?
Nice to meet you. Hello.
Why do you tell me?
Hey. I will hear more. Okay, oh, my, okay, it's nice to have you.
I didn't know if you were representing this.
I am from the African region.
Okay, yes. Okay, you're present.
Thank you. Good to see you. Hi, Tasha.
She's interesting.
Wonderful, nice to meet you. Hi, how are you? Nice to meet you.
I felt literally.
Under four.
Sorry.
That's a good job. What's that? Only jobs for this.
Well, I mean, it's not a good thing. For living. Home ownership.
Well, that's exactly what I'm doing. It's the, it's the, it's the.
So if you take. It ends up. So if you, if you have value, let's say one year, it's well valued. Have a business to touch it, deduct it, for your advertising. So it's anything that takes six years. That's a good job.
First person, once the person that actually called me and said, I don't have a number ten at any. The man when she showed up registered. Right, and the number, the name, and had a phone number, I think.
That's astonishing. Excuse me.
So.
How do I say your name? Tasha, I want to get your last name.
It's Ledrick, Ledrick. The C-H is like a K.
Okay.
Like my husband for that.
Hey.
How you doing, man?
Hi.
How you doing?
Nice to meet you.
So far the weather hasn't gone good yet.
Okay.
There you go.
Make your face check.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, but like I said, the C-H is like a K.
Okay.
I'm gonna look for you on there.
Yeah, okay.
Wait, literally, my mom's things.
Yeah.
Sure, that's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Random.
I'll have to wait till after the meeting to see what it is.
You don't think we should have had a section, you know, that was like.
TikTok?
TikTok, right?
There you go.
No problem.
Okay, we'll get together.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're around, but I think you find these things are less.
How you doing, sir?
Good, how are you?
Thank, thanks for finding Mary.
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted.
Glad my skills are good, I'm like.
Right, cause I, I got.
Take your shit, you're signed. Oh, now, perfectly, now it's time, you gotta do it.
Yes, Mary.
So I will, I will get you these things while we're standing.
Too much.
So that you're not guessing at what you're.
Our church works a lot with food.
Well, we're stretching some of that, we didn't. Absolutely.
The guys drive the truck all the time. We're at Crystal Park, you know, that is.
Okay.
That's our, that's who we take our food. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the support and thank you for helping to get food out.
Something, yeah.
That's what's important.
Yeah. Looking for kids. Yeah.
Okay, so then, so this is just, so somebody in the community.
Hey, what did you, um, what did you do on my app?
I think I'm gonna have to, I think I'm gonna have to call Apple. And I wish I hadn't given away the one that he gave back, because then I would have switched them.
What's wrong with that?
You need a high school. Yeah.
No, I have two different passes.
Okay, all our high school kids come in for.
Do my civic college duty?
Yeah, yeah, all the college kids come in, you know, so it's a good assignment.
Hi, Jamie.
How are you?
I always get.
Thank you for that, and there is a way to look them up now.
Well, this is part of it, it's either was.
Labor is like when I hit the return button.
Old permit?
Yeah.
Like, um, current. Current of the side, you're not using your current life, but it's six.
Okay, I didn't have a chance.
So that's, that's why I'm taking the legal studies classes and.
Oh, so, uh, like, permit, like, permit.
Well, that's a bad area, man.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
It should be open to the public.
Well, I call the building.
Starts at college.
Well, so you just, yeah, but.
Of course, there you go.
She called the president's address and all that. Hey, you can. All that legal study.
Well, our new, so our new one for.
I'm a professor. I'm, I wanna, will be a prosecutor. This one is a term of investigation. In that form. Oh, yeah, you should do that, with all the time.
I'm gonna show the audience too.
Yeah, if you go to.
Services.
What are you looking for, general knowledge of it?
At the bottom of your page, you'll go search, and then you'll also search up top.
Oh, okay.
And you can search.
You're looking for more.
The CICs and their registration.
Yeah, if you're looking for like more quote unquote things in, you know, the focus of the education. It's controlled by, um, law and legal.
That's what, right? As you.
And then the class I'm going to use for tonight is called, um, State Muckel. Do you mind if I say the state definite? Things for that.
How many times?
Contacts.
Why, look at this story.
Oh, I figured.
Good six.
How's it going?
Good. I was, um, late because, um, you know, but, um, my head's.
So it's always fascinating me.
An interview on.
Always said I was a lawyer, I just wasn't smart.
Okay. They say, well, you know, they gave you.
Yeah, sorry. Found out.
On, on prime time.
Right, oh, okay.
Whatever. But he was kind of like. And that's where the high station, it was like, it was like. Yeah. You know. So, kind of anxious to stay, so I had to watch.
She's actually turned it very much.
Yeah.
Have you?
All. They all.
Well, except.
Not there.
I don't have, he's still have braces behind him.
Caption. I didn't smell it.
This is the goal, that's Bob Goff's. Um, if you go, you're gonna go to the food bank, start to take out. And then there's like, set it from there, call the gateway services center.
I know.
And go in door N one. If you write, all our doors are numbered, so if you just write door N one, you just don't go. Yeah.
I did. Did you bring your face in? You don't want to turn.
This is the case. I turned it by.
Online.
Oh.
And if we do online. It's possible.
Well, yeah, exactly.
I'm sorry, where's your pencil?
I have my pencil.
It's the two, the second one, the one that's better.
Sure it is.
Patrick, that's. It's a little disappointed when I thought at the end of it, like a pencil.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem, yeah. If people do that all the time, I suggest it, go over it. Don't get you all squirreled away and set up, just. Good way to kill a couple hours a week.
I have so many things.
But if you like. Always. Always.
That's probably where.
How do we know how long, how, how do we know how much the piss charges?
Put it on top, it should, a little pop-up should show up.
Okay.
Cause the charge is on top.
Yeah.
Oh. Limited knowledge.
See?
That's why I have limited knowledge. Or at least I'm certain I forget, I'm sorry, I used.
The train's too quick.
I do, I do. Okay, got that, we're probably good.
I now call to order the North Canton City Council meeting of November fourteenth, twenty twenty, the time is seven PM. Then, uh, we can, first we'll do opening prayer. Uh, there. Raise for prayer and remain standing in the pledge of allegiance, bow your heads, Almighty God. Last week, we marked two events of great importance in our civic life. An election and Veterans Day. Tonight, we give thanks for our freedom as a free people to choose our path. And we give thanks for all those who, under arms, have defended that freedom. And we express our eternal gratitude for those who have purchased that freedom with sacrifice. Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ben, would you please call the roll?
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member McLeister?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Members Troy?
Here.
Member Volt?
Here.
Five present members, Orr and Wirik absent.
Motion to excuse member, members Wirik and Orr?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, public hearing? Committee of the whole and city council and the October twenty-twenty finance report. Seven? Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, at this time, we'll have a special presentation from Teresa Ledrick, did I pronounce that right?
Tasha.
Tasha. Tasha.
Ah, I was focused on the last name, sorry. Um, she's from the, uh, Akron Canton Food Bank and Jamie, um, was the one that asked her to speak, right?
Yes.
Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, how's everyone doing this evening? Good.
Good, thank you.
All right. Get back to my notes here. Okay. It doesn't work, it's okay. I was like, oh, it goes up and down. Good evening, um, my name's Tasha Ledrick and, uh, again, I work with the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank. Um, and I'm excited to present tonight, um, so I primarily work in the area of scheduling volunteers, so I will speak with everyone, um, about, um, the opportunity to volunteer with the food bank. But I just wanted to, uh, give a brief, uh, presentation, um, providing a little bit of an overview. Um, and I'm really excited to actually chat tonight because I've been a resident of North Canton now, my husband and I have been here for over twenty years. And, uh, so it's, it's nice to come and, uh, present at city council, so, um, thank you again for having me. Thank you, uh, Councilman McLeister, um, through volunteering, um, he asked if I could, um, come present. Um, through volunteering, um, he asked if I could, um, come present, um, here at, uh, council and I said absolutely. I know, also know councilperson, uh, Stephanie Warren, um, she volunteers, uh, with the food bank and connects, um, her leadership, Stark County, um, organization, um, with, um, volunteer opportunities with the food bank. So, um, it's great to see, see you and Mayor Warriler, thank you for having, having us, having you here tonight. Um, again, my primary responsibility, uh, with the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank is I schedule volunteers. I schedule non-corporate group volunteers, um, which would entail school groups, church groups, friend groups, neighbors, um, civic groups, I have boy scouts and girl scouts that schedule volunteer opportunities with us. Um, and we have, in the last year, opened a new facility in Stark County, it's in Canton. Um, and, uh, so it's, it's been really nice to be in Stark County, again, I live, um, here in Stark County. And, um, I have a colleague that assists with scheduling our corporate groups. So if you are ever looking for volunteer opportunities, um, please reach out, we'd be happy to connect you with those opportunities. Now, just to bring you, uh, a little bit of information as to who we are, what we do at the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank and how that connects to, uh, North Canton, um, is what I'd like to really focus a little bit on. Um, for those of you who may not be familiar with the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank, um, we have responsibility in eight counties in northeast Ohio. Uh, those eight counties being Carroll, Holmes, Medina, Portage, Stark, Tuscarus, um, Summit and Wayne. I didn't use my fingers, I usually use them to, to make sure I got them all, but I believe I captured all. In those eight counties, we have over six hundred programs that help us get food out to the community. And those programs, um, are organizations, nonprofits that host, whether it's a pantry, whether it's a hot food site, a hot meal site, a youth backpack program, or, uh, senior food box programs, or other, uh, emergency or shelter programs. And bringing, um, helping to get food from the food bank, because as a food bank, we are ensuring that good food that's available in the community isn't going to waste. And once we have that food in our inventory, our programs have the opportunity to see what's on our menu, what's in inventory. They order those items and then they take them back to their respective programs and those programs assist in getting food out to the community. Being here in North Canton, it's possible that you at times have observed a line outside of a church on a pantry day. And it means that someone's going to have access to good, healthy food, um, to take home and that that really good, healthy food, uh, didn't go to waste. Um, what we like to express, um, at the food bank is that more than enough food is produced to feed everyone. However, it's a matter of helping everyone get access to that food, because there may have been a circumstance that affected someone's household. Um, households may be making choices and making decisions on paying a medical bill or buying groceries. Or it's now cooling down, your heat's being turned on probably, that heating bill may go up. How do I pay for groceries? How do I pay for food? Sometimes it's simply an unexpected layoff and those household bills continue, but that income has a pause, it has a bump. I like to say a bump in the road. And so the food bank ensures, to the best of our ability, that everyone has the access to food. Through our programs. Um, so that those choices that have to be made, you don't have to choose, um, to not eat. Choose to pay that car repair so that you can still get to work and our resources, our, our pantries, our partners assist in ensuring you have access to food. Looking on a, a little bit closer to home, um, I just want to point out a few programs in Stark County, in particular in North Canton, um, that help, um, in getting food out to the community. If you'll reference the hunger in Stark County, uh, document that I provided, just a little bit of a brief overview, um, overall in Stark County, um, just over fourteen percent, and this was as of, uh, earlier this year, so these numbers may change and fluctuate, um, just a bit. Um, but please note that, um, this, this is pretty close to home, this is Stark County. Um, over fourteen percent overall food insecurity in this immediate area. Looking at child food insecurity, we're looking at just over nineteen percent. And it took me a long time to chat or give tours and talk about children being hungry, that just really hits. And see, okay, so I can't talk about that because it's just, it means so much that children have access to good food, going to school, after school, and, um, so here in North Canton, uh, referencing again this document, some of our top partners by, uh, in this county, um, lo- lower, lower on the page, top partners by pound, you'll notice that, uh, North Canton Church of Christ is one of our top partners, um, and overall programs that we have in Stark County. Now, this number changes, um, and has changed because we are always looking to grow our partnerships. We are always looking to find any pockets of the community where food insecurity, where hunger may exist, and help those programs connect with food from the food bank, uh, to get to their organization, to get to their community. So as of March of this year, we had sixty-five food pantries in Stark County, we had thirty-three hot meal sites and shelters. We had seven senior citizen programs, we had twenty-seven youth and backpack programs. And we had about fifteen other non-emergency programs totaling a hundred and forty-seven programs in the immediate Stark County area. And again, those programs are continuing to grow, um, we are very thankful, um, that several programs that had to place a pause on their operations, um, were able to continue, um, and recover, um, post COVID, um, because there was absolutely, um, an increase in need, um, during that time. Um, I don't want to take up too, too much more time and I definitely want to be, um, available for any questions, but I want to be respectful of the overall agenda, um, for the council meeting this evening. And I'll, I'll just kind of wrap it up by saying, if you are looking, um, for a way to connect with the food bank, um, I would be happy to connect with you by phone, by email, um, I can leave information, um, I can leave information with you, um, by my business card if, if maybe, but, um, it's just been, uh, a pleasure to meet everyone tonight. And, uh, again, Councilman McLeister, thank you so much for inviting me and, uh, hopefully I've provided just a little bit of information for anyone who may not have been aware, um, of the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank. And like I said, we have the new facility, the new campus down, um, on Cherry and Canton, um, but we have partners right here in North Canton, um, that help get food out to the community. Any questions at this time?
You know, I'll just throw out that, um, if you have not been down to their new facility down in Canton, which, correct me if I'm wrong, is it the site of the old Fisher's, what, what was that?
Absolutely, absolutely. So it's on Cherry Avenue Northeast and yes, so, uh, the Stark County campus is located at the site of the, an old Fisher facility, an old Fisher building.
And when that facility, if you don't mind, um, I can share just a little bit, when that facility closed years ago,
um, it actually created in that immediate community, a food desert. And when we were looking to build a new facility, uh, in this area, because our main building is still in Akron, it's in Summit County. Um, but again, you heard me say that one of our, uh, counties that we're responsible for is Tuscarus County. That's south of here, we have Wayne County, we have Carroll, we have Holmes. All of those counties with our partners, those partners, prior to us opening the Stark County location, had to place their order and pick up their orders from our s- Akron location. That's a lot of wear and tear on vehicles, gas prices have gone up. Um, and having a, a facility that we were thankful to find that land, um, that facility, we were, it was unfortunate that, that Fisher's had closed, but being able to find that location and build our new building on that site, um, allows us to have access, um, to our partners, um, in this region a little easier, um, than having to travel up through, right now, just a little bit of construction on seventy-seven, um, when it's all done, it's gonna be amazing. Um, but, um, we're excited to, to have that new building, but yes, it is on the site of the old Fisher's.
Sure, and I was just gonna say that it's an absolutely terribly impressive building, um, absolutely loved it, but one of the things that, uh, we had a conversation, my, my company went in to, to volunteer there, I think it was about maybe two months ago. The thing that, that struck me in, in, I'm carrying with it, carrying it with me now, is food insecurity knows no zip code. I think was the conversation we had afterwards and, I don't know, seeing the fact that possibly twenty percent or up to twenty percent of children in our greater community could be affected is, is heartbreaking to me, but that's why I just thought it was so important that, that you came in and, you know, share a little bit about what you guys are doing down, down there and I'm, I'm so glad that you took me up on, on that offer, so. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, thanks again, man.
Ms. Tasha, also thank you for your presentation and, uh, having this as a resource for Stark County is tremendous.
Mm-hmm.
Because in our community, I am aware, we have a couple hundred families that are, that are being fed through, uh, compassion delivered, meals on wheels, and also through our Care's Pantry, you know, at the high school. And I've had the opportunity to volunteer at the Church of Christ and you have hundreds of families coming through in just a short amount of time.
Absolutely.
And the summit and, uh, Faith United Methodist Church, so you're as a resource for all these organizations so that you're right. So those young people are being fed and also the adults that, uh, may have some sense of, uh, uh, not having that opportunity to, like you say, balance the needs of the family, so thank you for your presentation and Jamie for organizing it and, and knowing that we have this resource in Stark County is just, uh, we're very fortunate that we have this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just, um, one other thing.
Yes.
I think too, uh, that asset of having you in our community and moving from Akron to here and like you saying, um, all the people that you support, but when we've gone down there and this is a great opportunity for people who have children or if you're in a church group or, I mean, any really type of group, the great thing that you do is you don't just say like, here, we're gonna put you to work at this table, you tell them the why, the how, who we're serving. I mean, I even asked you and I've been there so many times and brought so many different groups from our signature program to our spot, I mean, we do bring everybody to you.
We do, yes.
And to see the amount of food, I mean, like you said, to show the impact that you have, but more importantly, it's the stories. I mean, we're, we walk in and you kind of are embarrassed because you are also walking in when there's a line gathering for people that truly need food on that day. And I think I even asked you that day, um, and I've been there many times and you have different questions each time you go, cause something, you know, will affect you and, and you saying how respectful you treat everybody, you don't ask, do you really need it? It doesn't look like, it seems like you drove in a nice car, uh, it's again, that insecurity, well, maybe so, but you also can't pay maybe for that car or for that tire that you've done this month and so you have to substitute. And I, I loved you just kind of reminding me and the class members of that and, um, I know especially for our, our youth academy to impact them at that age. I hope that they can keep taking that through the different, um, challenges they have throughout their lives and opportunities that they can serve others, so. Thank you for being here.
Yes.
And you do an amazing job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tasha. Um, okay, moving on to recognition of the public. At this time, members of the public wishing to address city council may do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes, comments shall be limited to legislative items appearing on tonight's agenda only. The rules of speaking, uh, will appear on both screens. This will serve as the only warning for tonight, uh, for everybody in attendance, any violation of the rules resolved and checked through the process. Anyone wishing to speak tonight?
Chuck Osborne, three oh seven Fairview Street Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I want to speak to, uh, item eighty regarding, uh, ordinance eighty twenty twenty-two salaries. Before I, uh, speak to that, I want to read you a portion of our charter, section four point oh four, salaries and bonds. The council shall have the power to fix the compensation of its members and that of the mayor, the director of administration, the director of finance, the director of law, officers of the municipality of each job classification, and the members of any board or commission of the municipality, whether elected, appointed, or chosen. And I'll repeat the first phrase here, council shall have the power. Within this, uh, salary increases, which I will add, it are a little breathtaking, but my focus is on, uh, compensation of elected officials. Section two F one. Members of city council shall be paid a monthly rate equal to the minimum and earnable salary designated by the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, O P R S. That's the illegal. This council body cannot delegate away its authority. How will citizens ever know when a salary, council gets a salary increase? It's never announced, the public cannot come up and speak for or against it. And further, with no ordinance supporting that increase, if a citizen were, uh, desiring to referendum that salary increase, they couldn't even do that, cause nobody knows when these increases are coming. This is clearly a violation of the city charter. Now, this has gone on for a couple of years, I spoke against it a few years ago when it was started, I have recently spoken to an attorney, he agrees. This is not kosher. So this needs to be changed. You are not here to earn a pension. And this is in direct pursuit of making sure you get a hundred percent coverage to get a, a, a pension. Now, if you don't meet that dollar income requirement, you do get partial credit, you can get three quarters or half-time credit. But continuing to pursue securing a pension for you, and this also presupposes that you're gonna be here, I think it's for the ten-year minimum that O P R S will require. So to all of you, uh, here on council, if you show up for council, expect to be here ten years, so you qualify for the O P R S salary. This is wrong and this needs to be removed. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council tonight? Last call. Okay, moving on to, well, did you want to just talk now?
No.
Uh, moving on to the whole business, Ben, would you please read ordinance sixty-five dash twenty twenty-two?
An ordinance amending chapter seven oh five designated outdoor refreshment area of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to reflect recent changes in state law.
There.
Well, uh, this is the third and final reading, uh, regarding some, uh, technical changes toward Dora. Uh, the, the principal, uh, amendment or change has been that we have physically designated the, or we've designated the physical addresses of the door, that mark the door boundary. So, and there were a couple of other minor changes, but, uh, this is, this is it. And brings us into compliance with state law. If there are any questions, I would move that we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Uh, Ben, would you please read ordinance seventy-two dash twenty twenty-two? Ben, would you please read ordinance seventy-two dash twenty twenty-two?
An ordinance to approve and adopt current replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
Okay, this was John, John is out.
Daryl would be the next.
Yeah, Daryl, you are in the center there.
Hmm.
Would you like me to?
Why don't you go ahead, because you do a better job summarizing it than I will.
So, we borrow a number of provisions of our local code from state code, and once a year, council's office staff goes through and updates those codes to make sure we still match state law, this is just the annual update.
This is, and this is done annually. Are there any questions? If not, then I'll move the adoption of the third reading of ordinance seventy-two dash twenty-two.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance seventy-six dash twenty twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of one, all of a ten-foot wide alley between four fifteen Portage Street Northwest and the associated garage to the south, two, all of an eleven-foot wide alley between four oh one Portage Street Northwest and three forty-one Portage Street Northwest, and three, all of an eleven-foot wide alley between three thirty-seven Portage Street Northwest and three twenty-nine Portage Street Northwest, located within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Ben, could you read that with the parcel numbers in it? I'm just kidding.
If you really want.
No, we've discussed this in the, we had a planning meeting about it, our public hearing meeting about it, we've discussed it before, there's nothing new, this is, as is, any problems were dealt, were already discussed, so I move.
Before you move, have we had any additional resident input regarding proposal?
I've heard none.
No. Constables heard none?
Nope.
Okay, very good, okay.
All right.
Go make your motion.
I move we adopt.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read resolution seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-two?
A resolution adopting the solid waste management plan for the Stark Tuscarawas-Wayne Joint Solid Waste Management District.
All right, Jamie, rubbish law, go ahead.
Thank you, President Stroya. So, I think we all pretty much remember this, every county is required to adopt a waste management plan, and so we were just voting to reform the plan that has been presented to us, so nothing new has changed, so I move that we adopt. But I move that, yeah.
Stroya seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty dash twenty twenty-two?
An ordinance amending various provisions of chapter one fifty-five Personnel Regulations of the Codified Ordnances of the City of North Canton to modify various personnel rules and regulations in the titles and compensation levels of certain personnel.
So, this sets the maximum salary cap for each position, they are the exempt positions only, none of the union positions. These positions increase automatically by Social Security's cost of living, which was released on October thirteenth at a rate of eight point seven percent. It's also increasing the uniform allowance and adding some different position titles. So, there's one for, or two positions for code enforcement coordinator, one for community outreach manager, IT systems, and public policy analyst, those are the new positions, and then it also adjusts for the wages for city council, so that those will stay in line with the OPRs minimum. Questions? Seen none, I make a motion that we pass.
Before you go, there is a question. During the public speaks, I was struck by Mr. Osborne's comments, and that he states that this is a violation of our charter. Reality is, it isn't, and I think it's important that the public know that. The charter says that council shall fix the compensation, it does not say how it shall fix, or what the methodology is to fix it. It's really pretty simple, if you want to know what the council salary is, you either A, look at the ordinance, or you call the clerk. Shocking that someone would actually make an inquiry as to what that salary is, and it should be noted that that salary legislation does have a termination point on it, and will be revisited by council at some point in the future. I also find it somewhat interesting that Mr. Osborne claims that the public has no remedy. Well, the reality is, it does. The charter, previously referenced, provides for both referendum and initiative. Really pretty simple. But I think the public also needs to understand that when you look at compensation, compensation isn't necessarily about just hitting a retirement date, a session ago or a term ago. And actually, in response to Mr. Osborne, who wanted more competition on council, we concluded that the research suggested, and I use the word suggested, that you had your most competitive races when two things happened. The first is, you had a compensation level that was attractive, and the second was you had a four-year term. Mr. Osborne has opposed both. Ying yah. I don't know what the, what the necessary answer is, but what I can tell you is that stating that this is a violation of the charter is simply not true.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Verifications?
Make a motion that we pass. Ordinance eighty dash twenty twenty-two.
Revolt seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty-one dash twenty twenty-two?
An ordinance amending chapter one thirty-seven Department of Police of the Codified Ordnances of the City of North Canton, specifically section one thirty-seven point oh four personnel, in order to increase the authorized number of police patrolmen and full-time dispatchers.
David?
So, because police and fire are civil service, they have personnel caps that are set by city council. The schools are requesting some more SROs, State Resource Officers, that we previously had. The SRO program was first enacted, they added a clause to the police caps that said, this is the cap unless you have funding from an outside source. Now, it makes it hard to keep track of that cap, and this proposal is just to raise the cap to straight twenty-five, which it should be one more than we need to cover the two requested SROs, and cut the other clause about if you have the funding from outside source, so Chief Kemp would be able to hire the patrolman he needs within the budget that council sets for their department, and fill the SROs, and he can assign that to a patrolman as he deems necessary.
Thoughts? Questions?
Make a motion that we pass ordinance eighty-one dash twenty twenty-two.
Revolt second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read resolution eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two?
A resolution to acknowledge the rates and fees utilized to establish the budget for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year.
Stephanie?
Okay. So, this is just the rates that you can think of, from recognized property to water rates to pool rates, just any rate that you can think of throughout the year, this is what that does. So, we set those rates, and this is just a resolution to accept them. So, I move to adopt.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures and related one-time permanent transfers of monies made to various funds for the period beginning January one, twenty twenty-three, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, we've had a number of meetings about this, we had our committee meeting, which talked about the budget, really looking at that bigger picture, and then we had a first reading, and I don't believe we had any questions at that point. So, this is the second reading, and then we'll have one more final reading. Again, if you look online at the budget book for northcantonohio.gov, that's our budget book, it really has everything that you wanted to look at. So, if you need detail on something, or you need to know how many police cars there might be, or what we're thinking about doing to Dogwood, everything is in there. And then, of course, we have our director of finance, our director of operations, that we could always reach out to. Does the director of finance have any other questions or concerns at this moment?
I received no other questions either.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, then I move to adopt the second reading.
Revolt second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the director of administration to advertise and receive bids, and authorizing the mayor upon board of control approval to enter into a contract for the twenty twenty-three street resurfacing program at a cost not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, this is the twenty twenty-three resurfacing program. I'm going to make a motion to postpone ordinance eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two to the next council meeting.
Revolt seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going on to new business, Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the direct, authorizing and directing the director of administration of the city of North Canton to file a petition for annexation of territory owned wholly by the commissioners of Stark County, Ohio, and adjacent to the city of North Canton as permitted under Ohio Revised Code, section seven oh nine point one six, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, Daryl, I am gonna make a motion to postpone this, but you're welcome to begin the discussion if you'd like.
We can discuss it when we bring it back.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone eighty-five, ordinance eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two to the next council meeting.
Revolt second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty-six twenty twenty-two?
An ordinance amending chapter thirteen ten Contractor Registration, specifically section thirteen ten point oh eight, work without permits slash registration of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to correct references to other code sections, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, Daryl, same thing, I'm gonna make him, okay. I'm gonna move that we postpone ordinance eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two till the next council meeting.
Revolt second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the director of finance of the city of North Canton to make final appropriation amendments for current expenses and related one-time advances and/or permanent transfers of monies made to various funds needed during the fiscal year, ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, and within available resources in order to balance and close the fiscal year.
Stephanie?
Again, we've talked about this, and this is just what we do at the end of each year to make sure everything balances. Correct, director of finance? Any other, any other things you'd want to add at this point?
No.
Okay. Then I move to adopt.
Revolt seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department reports, Director of Administration, Patrick?
Thank you. Would, just like to remind council, any inquiries concerning leaves, you know, leaves in the street, leaves, 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 lots of leaves. You know, we do have ordinances on the books, something that we should be talking about next year. It is a responsibility of the homeowner to remove leaves from the curb and gutter in front of their property. I don't think that's ever really been communicated over the years on a regular basis to let people know. It is problematic if you sweep the leaves up, once they reach the street, they are considered hazardous material, they cannot go to leaf recycling, because they pick up stones and other debris that might have carcinogens on them, and they have to go to down to Canton's waste treatment facility, and those, every time that the street sweeper goes down there, you know, round trip probably two hours, till they, only goes twenty miles an hour, you know, so it's a waste to get out there and come back, and they have to empty it and wash it out, so that none of those things drip on the roadways on the way back, there's a lot of regulations that concern it, and it costs us just shy of about six hundred dollars every time to have them to clean it up. So, we do, you know, like when you see in the spring when we kind of do, the street sweeping, we're picking up all that loose debris, gravel, grit that accumulates over the winter, I mean, you can get a lot of that in that truck before you have to go down. But leaves, they fill up that, just as they fill up your leaf bags, just as they fill up your lawnmower bags, they fill up those street sweepers just as much. So, I think it's something that we should start, you know, as we're looking forward to the next addition of some of our staff, this is, you know, communications with the, with the constituencies is high on our list, of informing the residents of what it is that we can and cannot do, and how they can help. So, that was, I wanted to get that out there. Second, wanted to let you know that the, you know, obviously, the, the pool, the Dogwood Pool's closed its season, and traditionally, at this time, we get together with the Y and review our management contract, which we have done, that is something that I put into effect four years ago, next year will be the fifth year of that five-year contract, and we'll need to revisit that. I think it's been working splendidly since it was rewritten, and the Y reported our best year ever, as far as anybody could tell record-wise, with, I think approximately thirty-five hundred members, staggering number, and the number of visits compared to, you know, half a dozen years ago or so, up as well. So, the, the changes that we've made to try to enhance the user experience, I believe the numbers bear out that they worked, because the visits are constant, they're up there. We did raise membership fees. Last year, we did institute some other control mechanisms where we allowed, it was members only on the weekends, and day passes had to come during the week. That went over very well, I think it's reflected in the numbers. So, the, the end result is that we had a, we had a gain, a profit, if you will, at the pool, and that was the intent of the, of the agreement, was to gear management to get that. And as part of an amendment that we had done to that contract just a couple years ago, we agreed that the, that the profits would be split forty, forty, twenty, forty percent to the Y, forty percent to the city's general pool operating account, and the other twenty percent to rebuilding the Dogwood Pool Facility, the well-keep center, the bathrooms, you know, that, that opening that you pass through to get into the pool. And so, the rough numbers was approximately a hundred and forty thousand-ish, and so, the Y would retain forty percent, the other sixty percent comes to the city, but twenty percent of that's gonna go to that pool fund. So, we know that with Catherine's application to the state capital, we received three hundred thousand dollar grant towards that project, and with other things that we have going, we think that that's a project that we can make happen for twenty twenty-three. So, the plan at this time is, when the pool closes for the season next year, which is Labor Day, that we would be in a position to demo the building and get the, the shell up, you know, by winter, and then finish the interior build-out over the winter, be ready to open on Memorial Day. So, that's the game plan, we're reaching out, working through an architect to come up with designs with its. with its collaboration with the Y, their personnel, getting to understand what is needed to optimally move people in and out of that facility in a more efficient manner, getting them admitted into the pool, getting them being able to use the restroom facilities and changing facilities, and being able to process people. And then, of course, with the concession stands, being able to operate a better concession stand that offers more variety to that. I will also put out a caution, though, that as we get the word out for next year, I've noticed since the five years that I've been here, that the pool recreation chairs, the lounges, the chases, are not being taken care of in a manner that is respectful. Every year, we're, we have been replacing, you know, a couple hundred chairs, lounges. And I, I don't know what, you know, I understand what some people are doing to them, and that we, this isn't just something that we can continue to keep doing. The costs of these things are rising substantially, you know. Of course, you know, the price to everything to the government is more than what it is to John Q. Public, it seems. And those chases, you know, cost, you know, well over $100 apiece. And when you drop, you have to replace 200 of them, it's a lot of money. And so we think that what we're going to go with this year is we're going to be encouraging people to bring their own chases, their own chairs, their own lounge to sit on. That way, I'm sure they'll be respectful of that property and, and, you know, take that in and out as needed. So that, that's the thinking at this time, I wanted to share that with you, as raw as it may be. It is something that we've been frustrated with over the last five years. I've been looking at it, I'm sure it's been continuing before then, but the cost of goods are just so much higher. I'm just not sure we can afford to keep doing it. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Patrick. Deputy Director of Administration, Catherine.
Well, I have some exciting news. Daryl, I said there was a surprise today to share along the lines of parks. So I'll read a press, bit of a press release we received from the Ohio Parks and Rec Association. They proudly have announced the 2022 Awards of Excellence, and Dogwood's Possibility Playground has been awarded the first-place award in the capital improvements category.
Yay!
Yay! That's the first award we've ever won for the City of North Canton. And Woody Woodward is the executive director. He just basically says, "Parks and Rec professionals throughout Ohio work every day to improve the quality of life of the people they serve." This effort of Dogwood Park's Possibility Playground is a shining example of the kind of work we are pleased to be able to present this award to. So this is voted on by park professionals all throughout the state of Ohio. There's a criteria of eight categories. It is community impact, achievement, innovation, execution, sustainability, resourcefulness, storytelling, and then the overall project. We had to kind of submit something from each category and pictures. And this also then places us in a category. All first-place winners are, presented this award January 31st at a banquet in Sandusky at Calahari Convention Center. And we are up in the running for what they call kind of a best-of-show type of award, which is called the Governor's Award. So we, we were there last year. Christina, being Chair of Parks and Rec, and I went up to Calahari for the Oprah, they call it, Ohio Parks and Rec's award. And we saw it, it's a big deal, and everybody's standing there from all over the whole state. It's really exciting, all these park professionals. And you just kind of wait, and then they announce it. So, you know, fingers crossed. I'll share with you a little bit of like what I submitted and what they voted on. So in community impact, you know, we talked about, we didn't have this. We just didn't, the gap, you know, existed in not having an adaptive play space in our community with all the wood mulch playgrounds. And so the real impact there was, you know, bridging that gap. And then in achievement, we talked about bringing members of the community together to achieve this, that, you know, we had the North Canton Public Library with the story walk. And they're now adding, we're going to be adding a new little library that's going to be coming soon. And we talked about working with Akron Children's Hospital and the schools. In innovation, we talked about, you know, we took some land that was unused, center located in the city, former ice skating rink. And then we did, really, we did not segregate the adaptive play experience, but we integrated it. And we talked about how, you know, we just had old play structures there and a two-stall bathroom from 1980, and, you know, put in a new one, better parking. Execution, everybody knows, we did it through COVID. We talked about all the ups and downs of getting it done and all the people involved with that. Sustainability, we talked about how the stormwater's being collected in the bioswells to make sure that it's cleaning before entering into the retention pond. And we brought up about how we partnered, when Mayor chaired the AEP Community Savers, the AEP Electric Savers Program. And we got that award for using sustainability-efficient lighting. And that we engaged Davy Tree also in, in trying, you know, to give us an assessment on the trees out there to not have to take down, you know, any more than we have to. Resourcefulness, we talked about how all the money came together from the Nature Works Grant, the capital funds from the state, the Hoover Foundation, the GoFundMe page started by community member Bruce Conry, city funds, private donations, North Canton Library, the AEP grant. Storytelling, we talked about it, just, you know, being able to bring not just all children together to play, but it's intergenerational play as well. When you have grandparents that may have wheelchairs or crutches, walkers, and they can, you know, come on, you know, into the play area. And really, I think what, I, I was scared, I didn't know we'd win because there's a lot of adaptive parks, you know, today. People are realizing that, you know, it's a real need. But what I said in this too was, if you drove by this summer, and I think we all did, it was crowded, like every single day, from people all over the, the area. And I said, you know, we haven't had, in this community, go back to the impact, I talked about, we lost the Hoover Company. We lost our largest employer, 3,000 employees at its height. And it was an emotional and a financial impact to our community. So not only did the city lose money, but we had multiple generations that worked there. And people were just down, and we were just kind of sad. And so for, you know, since the eighties, you know, we really hadn't had anything new. And we, once we developed this, this park that was intended to bring children together, brought an entire community together, brought people outside of the community in our community, and it's truly shown the possibilities. So it's kind of lifted us up to say like, we're back, baby. You know, we're coming back, we're doing new development, the schools are, all the other economic developments. So that storytelling won it for us, and we're pretty excited. So keep your fingers crossed on January 31st. Be really excited to get that Governor's Award. They also make a donation.
I think you have your acceptance speech done.
Right, you're good. I'm going to write it, I'm going to have it, I'm just going to will it out there. You know, just positive thinking. That's all I have tonight, thanks.
I'm excited.
Have a good one.
That's great. Mayor Wilder.
Yes, thank you very much. Would you repeat the, the award again for us? The award that?
It's, it's the Capital Improvement Award.
Capital Improvement Award, well, thank you very much. And if you reflect back on this, this was an idea that council came, was very supportive of, and it took us through our COVID years and through all the, the things that we went through to bring this idea to reality. Again, thank you, Catherine, for, for managing this. And this was one of our first, I think, major accomplishments this community had, the support of council, come out of COVID. And we should, we're very proud of that. And I just want to know what's our next project? But we'll hold that off, okay, because we're not going to stop there. But thank you very much. I do have some comments to make because there have been a number of things that have transpired with my involvement. And first of all, I, we had a, you know, due to the weather that we had on Friday, November the 11th, many veterans ceremonies were held indoors. And so we had our veteran ceremony on Friday, November the 11th, 11 o'clock, in the lobby. Well-attended, we had probably fifteen or so veterans that were there, plus other people, family and visitors. But I wanted to first say something too. I believe in previous councils or in previous administrations, recognizing the City of North Canton as a Purple Heart City, maybe the paperwork was there, but in contact with our local representative here in North Ca, in Stark County, didn't seem like we ever had a proclamation to really identify ourselves in support of our veterans. And I just wanted to share with you that also on November the 11th, I presented a proclamation to the audience, recognizing the City of North Canton, one, it was Purple Heart Day, but also a Purple Heart City. And frankly, it was in recognition of the estimated 1.8 million veterans who have been bestowed, bestowed this prestigious medal. The mayor of North Canton desires to join the many other cities in the nation to become a Purple Heart City. So I just want to share that proclamation with you, submitted to the agency that asked us to, not asked us, but inquired about our participation. So I wanted to make that known also. And during the North Canton Mayor Veteran, or the North Canton Veterans' Day Ceremony, we titled it, as many of you all know, Honoring All Who Serve. And I just wanted to recognize a few things that we have. I wanted to thank, again, Reverend Kara Stoltz-Costello, who presented the invocation. She's the Tuscarawas District Superintendent of the United Methodist Church. And she and her husband were also the pastors at Faith United, right here on Ninth Street. And she has a son serving in the National Guard right now in Honduras, on a mission there. So I thought the connection there was great. Hoover students going through, and her oldest son, Eli, is in the service. But I also wanted to recognize, we always have a good working relationship with our North Canton Middle School. And it gives those kids an opportunity to, we usually select three or four essays. Actually, I let the school do that, and it's called Patriots Pen Project this time. And I think they had a little prompting by the VFW, but to hear their essays, to talk about what patriotism means, and service to our country was very heartwarming. And again, I wanted to thank these four eighth-grade students who presented. Emily Epperali, Jacob Gro, Catherine Hayford, and Lydia McHolm. They did a great job. And folks, I just want to recognize the veterans that work for the City of North Canton. So please bear with me. We have Jim Davis in Fire and EMS, served in the Marine Corps. Cliff Lee, Fire and EMS, United States Army. We have Jason Myers, Fire EMS in, in the Army. Doug Taylor, working in Fire and EMS, Marine Corps. From the Police Department, we have Officer Scott Carroll, Air Force. Spencer Zabara, Police Department, Marines Reserve. Zachary Fullwalder, Police Department, National Guard. By the way, he is on deployment right now. He's on his second deployment, if I'm correct. We welcomed him back about a year or so ago, but he's been called up again. So our thoughts are with Zach. Nicholas Kukulus, Police Department, Navy. Frank Kemp Jr., our Chief of Police, National Guard. Our Patrick Lewis from the Police Department, serving in the Marines Reserve. Jacob Tate, Air Force. Mike Guth from the Street Department, US Army. Bailey, excuse me, Bailey Allen, works in our Parks Department, also serving in the Air Force. Jason Steiner, who works at the Water Treatment Plant, served in the US Army. And Ben Ickes, in our permits, served in the National Guard. So I thank all those gentlemen that are employed here with the City of North Canton, and for their service.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, I think you also served in the Navy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to share just a closing thought from that, from that ceremony, if you'll bear with me. The presentation by myself was, it's called "The Legacy of the American Veteran." And I just, in summary, I just wanted to share my closing paragraph, if you'll bear with me. "This is the legacy of American service members, a legacy of service and sacrifice that must be preserved and passed on to future generations so that concepts of duty, honor, and country are never forgotten." An American philosopher once wrote, "Those that cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." "The danger in forgetting the sacrifices made by those who have earned the right to the title of veteran is that, as a community and a nation, may forget the high cost of freedom." And we must never forget that. And I would be neglectful on my part to recognize this council member, Waren, for her daughter's service.
Thank you.
In the Marine Corps.
Yes.
Couldn't sway him to go in the Navy.
No, second lieutenant.
Second lieutenant, but there again. And if any of you have family members in the service, again, thank you for, because you can never say thank you enough, as I believe. Maybe we'll have you present next year too, okay? I think we might really do any. And as I continue on, please bear with me. There's another proclamation that I have that will be presented, actually tomorrow, but I'll share it with you tonight. Father Thomas Subula, the senior chaplain at Walsh University, is moving on. He's served the Walsh University ministry for over ten and a half years. And I just would, I'll, I have the proclamation here, I will not go through it all, okay? But I would like to just say that this, this portion. "After a decade of faithful service to Walsh University, Senior Chaplain Franklin Thomas Subella, Subella, has been appointed by the Most Reverend David J. Bonner, Bishop of Youngstown Diocese, to serve as administrator at St. Louis Parish in Louisville, and also Sacred Heart Parish in Harrisburg, and that's effective November the 25th." In concluding, I wrote this. "During the years of selfless service to Walsh University and the greater North Canton community, Father Subula has trusted in this, in his Lord's call, and guided others by the gospel, striving to inspire all to become the light of the world, the salt of the earth, and to be a part of the solution of a turbulent world. Therefore, be it proclaimed, I Stephen B. Wilder, Mayor for the City of North Canton, on behalf of the city, do hereby proclaim November the 15th, 2022, as Father Thomas Subula Day, in celebration and gratitude of his dedicated service to Walsh University and the North Canton community, as he goes on to fulfill his new role and discover new opportunities to help others." So thank you, Father Subula. I also want to thank the voters for participating in the 2022 mid-year term, mid-year elections. I want to especially thank the members of our community who served on the Charter Advisory Review Board. They presented several sections, items to council. Two out of three, or three were presented to the voters, and two out of three of those proposals passed. But I thank you, all of them, for their time and their willingness to present these charter items of concern and proposed changes for the betterment of our city and for our government. In closing, on Saturday, November the 12th, I had the privilege to attend the Marine Corps Lead McKinley Detachment Number 277 in celebration of the 247th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. I was flattered on behalf of the city. I accepted a certificate of appreciation of what they, what our city has done in association in supporting the Marine Corps lead. And finally, our North Canton Farmers Market, okay, has moved indoors. We still have about 30 vendors, and they'll be in operation, of course, you know, this Wednesday. And they're going to have two food trucks out there. But I told Jenna Druishmidt from Know Your Roots, Ohio, that I would put a special announcement in for them. And also, just so you know, November 23rd, they're going to have free meals available, free meals to go at the North Canton Farmers Market. And if anybody wants more information, they can just go on their website of knowyourrootsohio@gmail.com. So thank you for indulging me for these, these items of interest for me and for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Sergeant Gina.
Well, the Finance Department, since wrapping up next year's budget preparation, we are now working backwards on the current year again, and we're closing up the budget line items of open POs and working on open enrollment for our employees' insurance. So we'll be finalizing that in November. We were able to secure a 13-month premium quote, so it will take us through the end of next year, and then we'll be back to a calendar year, so that will help our budget as well. And our income tax is still up?
Thirteen percent?
Thirteen percent. Holding strong.
Councilor Clark, Ben?
As you all are aware, the requirement for rental properties to register takes effect January 1st. However, today, the portal went live, so any landlords who want to get a head start on it and register early can do so now. It is up live on our website, and through that same portal, residents can also now apply for their burn permits if they are somebody who likes to have backyard fires. And as I think I mentioned last time, we have great hopes to expand access to more city services through this same online portal. city services through this same online portal.
Any feedback from any registrar, what do you say, registrants at this point?
We have only had four so far.
Okay.
So not particularly heavy use yet.
Okay.
Nice. Okay, let's go to council reports. Ward One, Jamie.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, that was a fantastic report you gave, and so I want to echo my thanks to my friends, family, fellow citizens that are veterans. So I was at City Hall Friday morning, and I was impressed by the fact that we had gotten that spun in, to being inside so quickly. So, so wish I could have attended the event, but I saw some pictures online, it looked great, so.
Thank you.
Also wanted to echo your thoughts about the election, but for some other reasons. So we had some items passed that support local businesses, businesses that are
Yes, thank you.
in, yeah, in Ward Two, and that's all right, I'm picking it up for you. So in Ward Two, also in Ward One. So for me, election night was, it couldn't have gone better. I think this shows that our community supports and embraces local businesses that are here or will be coming here. So I just wanted to thank the North Canton voters for that. And again, thank you, Tasha, for joining us this evening, so.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie.
That's it.
All right, Ward Two, David.
Ms. Verena, thank you. A lot of work and effort goes into putting that together. Took many hands and many hours, but from somebody that understands the person that's coordinating all that and putting that together and communicating that on top of having a full-time job, was a major effort. So thank you for that. I think the city is much better now that we have Dogwood Park in place, and that's the first of many to come. So appreciate your effort and work on that. Last meeting, committee of the whole meeting, when we were talking about registration of contractors, I'd asked Ben to put together a way to find it a little easier on our website. So if you'll bring that up. Previously, all we had was a PDF listing all of the contractors in order. So now what we have on our website is a searchable list for our contractors. So you can search by trade, you can pick, okay, HVAC. And then you can see on the side the states that those are registered in our community to do work. So you can sort, if you want to look local, you can go to Ohio. And then you can break it down and say, I only want to deal with people in North Canton, if that's what you choose. And it'll bring up the contractors registered with the city to do work in North Canton. So Ben, thank you for putting that together. There's also our website on the page, a link to get directly to that. And we need to add some more, because I thought it was a big challenge, and because of your expertise and your knowledge, you put this together very quickly and efficiently, so.
That's really nice.
I think it's going to be a benefit to the residents.
Yeah, this is fantastic. Well, it's a good idea. You scared me at first, but when I realized how to do it, it all came together, so.
I think it's going to help the residents, especially when you're searching for somebody that's qualified to do work, that's going to pull the permits, that's going to do a good job, and you can feel confident that they're registered with the city, and that your job or action that you need to have completed on your home is going to be taken care of correctly. Thank you, Ben. And that's my report.
All right, thank you. David, Ward Three, Stephanie.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy, again. I am so excited. I know we were talking about this a few weeks ago. I think one of the coolest things about this project, though, is it, is it didn't start how we thought it was going to end. And I love that we were able to rethink, regroup, and switch it. Like, we weren't so like, nope, this is the way it has to be, this is what we want. We just, we switched it after COVID, during COVID, after, the needs of the community, funding. And that was what was so great, I think, is our adaptability. And I think that we haven't seen that sometimes before, and I really have seen that a lot with this administration. And it's so important when you start to see, I think, communities move forward, as they need to have that. So thank you for that, and I, I think we've got it. I think we've got the grand prize, so. My optimism and positivity, I don't know what they're not going to see if we don't have it, so. Great, great job. Mayor, thank you for saying so much about veterans. I love that you listed the names, and I think I didn't realize how many. And I work with a number of nonprofits where their job is to find jobs for veterans. My husband works, is a board member for the SAM Center, which helps veterans that are in need. And I think they're, they're giving away 1,400 turkeys for, in our community this, this year. So my daughter was home on Veterans Day. She would not wear her uniform because she doesn't feel like she's earned that yet. She's active duty, and she doesn't feel like that. But what she did say was she couldn't believe how many different signs were on different doors in our community, how many, you can go to this app and, and you could get free coffee at Gecko, or Cantata Taco is doing a taco. She was just so impressed of how many, how much support, you know, there was. So thank you for saying that. She deploys in March or April, and I think I'll have a whole new aspect as a family member of what that means at that point. So thank you for that. And thank you, Tasha, for being here. You didn't have to stay. So most speakers do pick up their bags and leave. So thank you. I know you have a son at home, and your nights are precious, and you're asked to do a lot after hours. So thank you. And even when you said, I want to be mindful of your agenda, I know with the Food Bank, you can go on and on and on. And we love hearing that. And so thank you for just, for being here. And Jamie, you're right. Thank you for the voters for saying that we believe in, in our local businesses and our commission, how important that they do get together and decide on things that they think will help us make more efficient. I mean, one of those that passed will hopefully help Gina, right? And make us more efficient and not have to waste time on different things, so. Thank you.
All right, Darrell.
Thank you. Just a couple quick, quick points. Reiterate Jamie's comments about the issues and tie it, thread it to what Gina said. Those local issues demonstrate community support for retail businesses. We're up 13% in large part because we have an economic development strategy that puts an emphasis on supporting that type of operation. If you look at our numbers, historically, we have weathered the COVID crisis in relatively good health. I can tell you from looking at other communities like Dublin that have a preponderance of office space, which is now empty, they're struggling with a budget. I shouldn't use the word struggling with, they're having to reassess how they, how they spend money. And we're in a pretty, pretty good shape. A couple, a year or so ago, and I think I can speak for all of us here, if you'd have mentioned Dogwood, we would have been embarrassed. It was a major fail out there at the pool. This administration had nothing to do with that. This council had nothing to do with it. But we acknowledged it. But I think it illustrates that the community, this goes to Mr. Osborne's earlier comments, has a choice. It can choose to be managed by mediocrity. When you have mediocrity, you get Dogwood Pool. When you choose talent, you have a Capital Improvement Award for Dogwood Park. You have a discussion about planning and executing a brand-new pool house. Clear choice, in my view. When you choose talent, you have people who can write legislation on the fly at a council meeting, people who can correct a website within a week based upon a councilman's excellent suggestion, and people who can stand up to rental registration with a user-friendly interface. So I think the community, I think the community has a choice on how it wants to be managed. Mediocrity or excellence? I go with the latter. And I congratulate everybody who has contributed that higher level of performance over the last year. Really exceptional. One team, one way forward.
Lot of stuff said, I'm not going to repeat a lot of it, but I like to talk, so I'm going to talk. Mayor, that was quite a list of veterans that you mentioned and read, so I appreciate that, and thank you, veterans. Tasha, thank you very much for speaking. What the Food Bank does is amazing, and I'm glad you were able to share your time with us tonight, although you didn't have to stay this late.
I was part of the community, everything. I don't mind.
We appreciate that. Catherine, yeah, amazing job at the park. That's, I'm glad that you're getting recognized, and I hope, that's on 31st, I hope that you can
And anyone can come.
That would be, we should do that, that would be great.
Brian Hill will come.
Can we get a police escort?
I bet we could.
Chief?
Yeah. We might be able to make that happen.
A bus.
But that's, that's very exciting. And, you know, there's other campuses, so to speak, for you to maybe make an impact on in the future as well, and that's exciting. I'm very excited about Dogwood Pool. I worked there, let's go, let's say 20-plus years ago. And it needed redone then. I mean, that place, working in that place and cleaning up and looking at all the things that would go wrong on a daily basis to that pool house, that's very exciting to me. So I'm looking forward to that. There were some exciting things for business that were approved, as Jamie said, and I'll just wrap it up by saying buy and support local. So I have a final call for new business?
I'm going to go through the calendar.
Yeah, let's adjust. And then, coming up, on the 21st, we're going to have a committee of the whole and a regular city council meeting. On the 28th, we will have no meeting. On December the 1st, we will have our organizational meeting. On December 5th, we'll have a public hearing for the Permian Paver Driveway. And on the 12th, we'll have a public hearing for signage code. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn. The vote moves.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.
We don't have a public hearing?
Yeah, but we don't need to.
I'll get it on YouTube.
It'll be the last one of the year.
Oh, absolutely. We'll have, oh, okay, so wait, we are. He says we are.
You guys are a little curvy. Is that for emergency?
We took it down, and now you've got the property. Okay. When was that?
You've been over there.
I've been over there.
Yeah, I've been working from home for two and a half years.
We're coming back on like the 7th or something.